Retired, he said he was retired judge at the circuit court. He's really retired from the city council here and the general assembly is going to make a presentation. But first thing we'll do is, Marcus, you want to have anything?
Sure. Yes, Mayor, and members of council, just three quick items. Tonight on the formal docket, you have two, you have an ordinance and a resolution before you. One deals with the gym policy. Rick Darrell made a presentation at the last meeting, and this is just getting us to have an opportunity to actually have the developable lots back into the private sector. And we also have R 11. There is a resolution that basically brings together a series of presentations that Sabrina presented to the council with their financial policies. As the mayor mentioned earlier, the informal agenda is pretty aggressive. I do believe that we have many short items and some that we can pull. A couple that are pretty important tonight would be the follow-up to Ban the Box, which is a very short presentation, as well as compensation, a quick overview on compensation, because at the end of this last budget cycle, terms such as drop in steps came up. And over the course of the last two months, the administration has been meeting with staff to get a better feel of what's important to the employees regarding several of these items. And we also have revisions to the floodplain regulations, which we'll spend some time discussing. And as the mayor said earlier, we do have two items for the closed session, real estate matters.
Okay. You want to introduce the presentation by?
Sure. Go ahead, Ron Williams, too, do that for us.
As you all know, Judge Leif has served as chairman of SIPSA for the past three years now, going on three years. And he asked if he could come give an update. We're, at that time of year, we're beginning a new fiscal year at SIPSA, and also there's a nominating committee for new officers coming in this year, and the judge is ending his term as chairman this year. But he'd like to give an update to the council on the status of what's going on with Southeastern Public Service Authority.
Thank you, Ron. And I'll just, I don't have a formal presentation. What I have are just a few comments that I haven't talked to the council in the last three and a half years since SIPSA was reorganized and had new membership. And a lot has happened, most of which you're probably somewhat familiar with. But having spent a little time sitting at the table where you sit, there are lots and lots of things that are priorities on the council's agenda. And I don't think that garbage usually finds its way very close to the top for good reasons. So I just would like to take a few minutes to tell you that I finished my term as chairman. It'll be six months as acting, and then three years I did that. And finish is actually tomorrow, and the term on the board finishes in December. But in that time, we've covered a lot of territory. The important, some of the important things are the tipping fees have gone down from $170 a ton to $125 a ton. The waste energy plant's been, has been sold. And the amount of money that Norfolk spends on solid waste has gone down substantially during that period of time, both from the standpoint of the tipping fees. But things that should be important to you is the quantity of waste that comes to the public service authority is substantially less than what it was four years ago. And that's from all jurisdictions, and Norfolk is no exception. And part of the reason for that is what I consider good management on your part and the other jurisdictions, in that there's a lot of yard waste that's been pulled out of the, what goes through the solid waste chain, and some other little pieces that may have been a little more troublesome, but are, I think everyone has decided that that's ought to be behind all the jurisdictions as it relates to how much waste is being carried by private individuals, haulers that might otherwise be municipal waste. And until 2018, when the SIPSA's current life ends, that's just part of, you know, the way, the way life is. And it probably causes the cities in the short term to pay a little less money. But it is part of what will, will keep, keep the tipping fees probably from going any lower now than, than, any lower in the future than it is, than it is right now. But I think, based on the management and the financial pieces that are in place at SIPSA, you can probably pretty comfortably count on not having to deal with any increases in, in solid waste tipping fees over the next, over the next three or four years. And so there's been a lot of downsizing in terms of employees. And, and I can comfortably stand here and tell you that, that it's, it's a good operating organization at this point in time for the handling of solid waste in the region, which includes the operation of the transfer stations and transportation from the transfer stations to the waste energy, energy plant. So that you can feel pretty comfortable with as, as this agency continues to operate for the next four years. I'm also here to commend the city and the other jurisdictions. I think one of the things that we've been successful in doing is changing the, the atmosphere a bit, and it's, there is just not as much confrontation with, between jurisdictions over this issue of solid waste. The agreements that everybody operates under are ones that have been in place for 30 or 40 years. And if they were the agreements that you would put in place today, they wouldn't be the same, and they won't be the same for the, the future after 2018. But nonetheless, I think the, everyone has worked through some tough issues, and at least to this point in time, and, and your management and representatives know that. I think the jurisdictions are working pretty hard together to try to come up with a workable arrangement. I think everybody now, with maybe one possible exception of a Western community, has passed a resolution, which the city of Norfolk has, that says that they think the regional approach is the best way to proceed in the future. There's still a bunch of unanswered questions that you're going to have to deal with. But I think the, the, the atmosphere among the communities is, is in a good position as the working groups try to move forward. There, there are potential pitfalls out there, and I won't try to deal with pitfalls as we, as we stand here. But there are potential ones there that, you know, that have to be worked with in order for the jurisdictions to come together with an equitable agreement for, for how you proceed in the future. Even though I finish up my time as chairman tomorrow, as these issues move on, and if there is a desire on the manager's part, or anyone else, councils, I'm certainly happy to, you know, to come at another time and talk further informally or otherwise with, with regard to how the, the city chooses to handle this. But we have been successful also in expanding, getting state approval to, for a new cell, a cell seven out at the regional landfill. The current one through cell six can permit the communities to go probably to 2030 or thereabouts. And with the new cell, probably 30 or 40 years beyond that, obviously depending on the environment, the environment that you're in. I will say one other thing. Wheelbrader, which bought the waste energy plant, over time, I think has, has become a dependable partner in the process. They obviously have their own agendas that, that they deal with. But I think that it has worked so far reasonably well together. That's not to suggest that, that the current contract between SIPSA and Wheelbrader, which SIPSA could extend for a period of time, certainly would not want to much of what is paid to them as a result of the buyout contract. And, and they're just dollars that follow that in order to make sure that that payoff occurs. But in any event, I just want to tell you that I think we've accomplished pretty much what I would have hoped that we had accomplished, should accomplish in, in this, in this period of time. And I encourage the city to stay engaged on the, the issue of solid waste and sort of provide some leadership to carry it on to the, the end. And, and I would encourage all the jurisdictions not to be tempted to run off on a do it your own and think you can, you know, cut a better deal with a private landfill or something. So just, you've done, you've done well, I think, in the, the CAOs and the technical committee, but have also avoided some of the issues that really need to be addressed. So I'll respond to questions.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, or I say, at another time, when somebody wants, needs solid waste to be, you know, on the agenda as the primary item, I'll be more than happy to, to talk to you.
First of all, Joe, I want to thank you for your service. I mean, you agreed to take this on some time ago. This was a bad news story, and now this is a great news story. And I don't know how the tipping fee compares to what other localities. But for a while, I know the 170 was on the very high range of what anybody in the country was paying. 120 is a much, 125.
125, yeah.
Is certainly.
And by the way, the SIPSA will be debt-free come 2018.
Yeah, and that was important, too. So, and I know that just didn't happen. It happened because you cared about it, and you worked hard with a lot of other folks. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Joe has suggested that his time has ended at SIPSA, that we should look for somebody else. I immediately thought of Don Williams, but I don't know that we could pull Don out of the.
Well, yeah. But, but the organization's at a, at a different stage totally, you know, at this, at this point in, in time. And I'm sure, I'm sure the council will do the right thing.
Yeah. All right, Joe, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thanks for coming down here. Thanks. Maybe that'll make the news paper. I mean, maybe a good news story, and they take a few weeks, but I mean, that's something worth reporting about.
One of my goals over the past four years is to keep us out of the news paper. So we've done a pretty good job of that here. Not perfect, but pretty good.
Okay. Thanks, Joe. And this is council, council interest. I would remind you, we are going to be in a time crunch. Paul, do you have anything?
I have.
No.
The only thing that I guess Terry and I both have is a little piece of fence that went up again. I think it's been painted.
It has been black.
I think we must have had a gussham hedge or something in front of it. Put that in, I think it might be happening.
And it'd be consistent with the resolutions.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Terry?
You do, please.
All right. Look, I just want to pass this one article out. I found it in the Wall Street Journal. And, you know.
People turning to chickens back.
It's, it's not about chickens. It's, but it, it sort of resonates. I don't know if the manager saw this or not, but it's, the article is about, it was in Wednesday's Wall Street Journal, about strapped cities press colleges to ante up. And it's about what, what cities in the Northeast, like in Rhode Island, are trying to do because they are so very reliant in the Northeast on the property tax, the real estate tax. And so, you know, I don't know that we could, could, you know, could do that. Here, they, basically, we're talking about some private schools up there. It looks like they're trying to, and some public schools. But the map is what you want to look at. You see how Virginia is more pink than orange, and all the other city, I mean, states around it are orange. We depend so much more on the property tax, and that is a local tax. I mean, our dependency on the local tax is almost as hard, as bad as it is, and, well, it is, as Massachusetts, and some of these, and Vermont, and some of these New England towns. So when you wonder about why we have such a hard time balancing our budget, short of just pressing on the real estate tax, that map tells you all you need to know about these other, like Maryland, there is, and even West Virginia, Kentucky, Tennessee, North Carolina, all of the, our surroundings states. Did I say something? You guys leave.
Yeah. You can figure out the rest.
But, you know, I mean, it's something that we ought to talk to our general assembly members about. Somebody ought to be, I mean, that's not a policy we can fix, but it's something that, and that would be a long march, I know. But, but I know Maryland, for instance, has localities and the states even share a certain amount of income tax that allows a better balance, especially when the real estate market goes bust, that, you know, allows us to not be so impacted. So, anyway, that's about. Hey, Tom.
Hey.
Okay, compensation.
I really think the article's worth looking at. But I mean, I mean, not just the, the, you know, about nonprofits eating up your taxpayers, but why it's so important in Virginia that you not let them eat up your taxpayers, unlike every one of the states that surround us.
Okay. I know we're on a tight agenda, so I'll go through this rather quickly. So if you have questions, feel free to stop me. As the city manager mentioned in his budget presentation and the message, 2014, fiscal year 2014 is when we're looking at compensation, an overall review of compensation. All right. So the, just to give you a brief overview of what we'll talk about is, we're just going to look at compensation as it stands right now in the city of Norfolk, review of our current salary structure, our step-based compensation, and possible alternative initiatives that may impact retirement benefits. There's no action required from you at this time, it's just to let you know where we're heading and what we've already talked about with some of our employees and our directors. As you know, the general fund budget that you passed back in May was $817.5 million. Of that, if you look towards the right-hand side, 368 million of that is related to general fund budget departments. 264 million of that is personnel, and that's just in our general fund departments. And that's that top right slice. And that's the slice that we're going to be talking about a little bit today. So the 264 million, what makes that up? 188 million of that is in straight salaries. That's about 71% of that 264 million. 24 million of that is just in health insurance, and 36 million is in retirement. 10 million is for payroll taxes, and other is 5.3, and the other is basically group life and VRS payments. So personnel is a big chunk of our general fund budget. So how do I, how do our salaries compare with our other Hampton Road cities? One of the things that we're looking at is our salary in comparison to maybe Virginia Beach, or Chesapeake, or Suffolk now. So Human Resources does a market study every year with all of the other seven Hampton Road cities. They take 254 job classifications that are common throughout the cities, and they study them for over three years. And we have about 37% that are below the regional average of about 6%. 6% is about the benchmark that they use. We have 23% of the 254 job classifications that are above the average of more than 6% and 40% within our range. So it's at 37% that we'll try and focus on and try and see if there's something that we can do for those job classifications. Over the course of the years, we have supported our employees. If you look at the top, I guess, three rows is our GWI and step history from 1997 to 2005. The bottom, black and gray, are 2006 through 2014. And as you can see, as, from 2010 to 2014, when the recession hit, we were unable to give a step increase. A step increase is generally valued about almost $4 million for one step. We were able to give some GWI increases in 2013 and 14. Comparatively speaking, we've been pretty comparable to the other cities. This table does not include any salary increases that were provided for a VRS offset that was provided back in 2012. We'll get a little bit more into that in a few more slides. But it does give you a regional comparison. And because of time constraints, I won't belabor this. So we'll move into a step system. One of the conversations that we're having with our employees and our directors is the step system. What is it, and what's the value of it? It's a, it's a system, if you sort of think of it as a staircase, and it goes from steps one through 20. An employee enters on a particular step and a number, and they have a salary. So when we give a step increase, it's generally about 2.5%. So they go from maybe step one to step two, and they get maybe about 2.5% increase. It's based on longevity, and if we had all the money in the world, we would provide a step increase every year. At regular intervals, employees are supposed to get an increase. We've had this system since 1958, at least since 1958, that we can find some documents to go back in history. Another alternative to providing a step system or salaries is called an open range, meaning you have a minimum and a maximum. The step system, as we have it, going back to the step system, 86% of our employees are on, on the step system. The step system also does cause a little bit of compression, and we do have some compression issues going on in the city. Compression, when, what is mean by compression is that it's a salary inequity problem when a employee enters with less years of service and receives more of a salary than an employee who has more than, more years of service. A great example of this is our police officers. Back in 2010, if we just say police officer A came in at step one and received a salary of $40,000. Because we have not given steps, steps in the last five years, police officer B now comes in and graduates at step one again, and they're at the same salary. Police officers, when they graduate the academy, do go into step one. So this is what we call a compression. So you have an officer with three years of an experience, with an officer with zero years of experience getting the same salary. When we looked at other Hampton Road cities for the pay structure models, we are the only locality that uses a step system for general employees. There are three other localities that use the step system for sworn officers, but we're the only ones for our general employees. So that's something to think about. Most of them have open ranges. Pay adjustments, just various types of pay adjustments that we can use, and some of which we have used, is general wage increase, a step increase that we just talked about. We are discussing merit and pay for performance. A lot of employers are going towards a pay-for-performance model. We've used employee bonuses. We've used, we can use salary range adjustments, and we can use administrative adjustment. A salary range adjustment is when you take a step, and you look at the minimum and the maximum, and you move the whole step. And so everything within that step moves up. So and generally, steps go from one to 20. So we're also looking at compensation initiatives that may impact retirement. Just one quick slide on retirement. This is our contributions to our retirement system. And as you know, the city manager has made a commitment to always fund the retirement board's request. Right now, we're pretty well funded. We're at 87, 80.7% funded. Our retirement costs for this year is about 41.9, and that's all funds. There was some talk about going towards VRS, and what are the advantages and what are disadvantages? We don't necessarily need to go to VRS. We can always model our system to look like VRS. So in the middle column talks about our retirement system, and the right-hand column is VRS. Both have a 5% contribution for employees hired after 2010. For Norfolk, it's October 2010. VRS is all employees, 5% contribution. The pension multiplier for us is 1.75. VRS is 1.7 and 1.65. 1.65 as of January 2013 will be the multiplier for VRS employees. So they're actually a little bit lower now. Average final compensation, we use the top three years of compensation. VRS now uses five years. A lot of employers are now going to the top five years. It is a money saver for the employer, so, because the employee will get a little bit less. Eligible retirement age for us is 60 years or 30, I'm sorry, 60 or 30 years. VRS is 65 or 30. Ad-hoc COLAs is for us, automatic COLA increase for VRS. Amortization schedule is, employees don't see this, but it's how we fund the retirement system. We're at 20 years, VRS is at 30. So there is something that we can look at, whether or not there's a cost savings there.
Sabrina, tell me, what does that mean?
How we pay out our retirement benefits, that we amortize it over a cost, over a period of 20 years. And VRS does it for 30 years. So what you contribute could be less if you're amortizing it for a longer period for payout.
I'll add to it later.
I don't understand.
I don't understand.
Okay.
You guarantee, if you work 30 years, you get, your margin, 1.75% is, that's a fourth of 30. Seven and a half.
The amortization schedule doesn't affect the employees.
I understand, but it's how you.
How we pay it.
Retirement system.
Right.
I mean, they look at their age, they look at a whole series, and what, and they calculate what it's going to cost them.
And the investment periods. The.
Okay, I got it.
Investing period for both is five years. We're also talking about, this, none of this is what we're saying we're going to do. This is all things that we're looking at. The defined benefit plan is what we have right now. A defined benefit plan is annual pension determined by formula. The benefit doesn't change, so that 1.75, as long as we don't change the plan, the employee gets it. It's a greater risk to the employer if the investments don't do well, which means the general fund has to kick in money. But with a defined contribution plan, it's based on the actual contribution by the employee, and it, it's affected by the market. So if the investments don't do well, the employee, when they get ready to retire, might not receive as much. It is a less, less of a risk to the employer, and the average benefit to the employee varies. VRS is going to a hybrid model, beginning January 2014, of defined contribution and defined benefit. Five and five conversion. We've talked a little bit about it when we did the, when VRS did the five and five conversion last year, in fiscal year 2010. In VRS, employees hired after July 1, 2010, were required to contribute 5%. Last year, in fiscal year 2012, they came back and said, all employees now have to contribute 5%. But those employees hired prior to 2010, we're going to give you a 5% salary increase as a comparable, so to offset that increase. So they did that because they wanted to create more of an investment on the part of the employees to, for retirement, and also to lower the employer cost. But it was comparable to the employees. So you have a salary increase, and you have a contribution. So it sort of nets it out. In Norfolk, employees hired after October 2010 are required to pay 5%. They were never given a comparable, because that was new employees coming in. Employees hired prior to October 2010 do not contribute anything. We contribute 100%. So when we say, should we look at all employees now contributing 5% to create that investment and have everybody on the same playing field? and have everybody on the same playing field and equal, we would also recommend a comparable 5% increase for those employees to offset that contribution rate. What that does is, it automatically, if we were to keep the step system, automatically gives everybody a two-step increase. One step is about 2.5, so when you do a 5% increase, it comes out to a two, tuna, two-step increase. There are advantages to this and there are some disadvantages. It will cost us a little bit of money to do this, but in the long run, we do create that investment on the part of the employee on the retirement system. We've also talked about a drop. A drop is a deferred retirement option program. And what we are looking at, it is for the sworn employees. And what this means is that you have to be full retirement age eligible to enter the drop program. And what the employee does is, they say, "I'm going to retire in three years," and they're going to enter the drop. And in three years, they retire and they take the money. The money within those three years that would have been put into the retirement system now goes to a separate account. So when they leave at the end of three years, they can take it as a lump sum payment, they can take it in a monthly annuity, or they can transfer it over to an IRA or rollover. What this does is, it does give employers an ability to plan and they know who's going to, who's going to retire. Specifically helps fire and police because sometimes they don't know and they have to schedule academies. But it may have a cost to the retirement system that will require an actuarial analysis, which we've just asked the actuaries to do for us. We've also talked about a VRIP program. As you know, we did one back in 2011. And in that one, we had about 148 people of eligible retirement age choose the VRIP program. And in that, we offered a $10,000 payout or a $5,000 payout plus one year of health care. It did save the general fund some money, but it did have a cost to the retirement system because some folks retired earlier than expected. So again, we've asked the actuaries to look at this again. So the goals of our compensation review over the course of the year is to look at our compensation and our salaries and the drop and the VRIP. We've looked at, we're looking at scenarios to alleviate compression, determine if the step system is appropriate and where it's appropriate. We're going to review our compensation for our lowest-paid employees, look at our long-term sustainability of our defined benefit retirement plan. And also, we're going to try and simplify our compensation plan. Our compensation plans are pretty, there are many sections and they're repetitive in some cases. So we want to make that a little bit more streamlined and so employees can, so employees can understand it better. So before I get off of compensation, I would like to also thank Human Resources, our Director Reece Stanley and her staff, and Ryan Bergman from the Budget Office, who are working very hard on this. And Human Resources has facilitated at least four conversations already with employees and directors and getting feedback. We're not doing this in a vacuum. Questions?
That's a lot of information pretty quickly.
Yeah.
We don't have the time to spend a lot of time on this, but Tommy, you have a question? I would suggest we bring something like this back. I mean, this is really the sort of stuff we need to dwell on a lot. I mean, even if we carved out another 30 minutes at some time at our retreat, I mean, I especially want to hear about the drop program. Tommy, I'll let you ask your question in a second.
Sure.
But the drop program, because there is, I mean, a lot of interest in that. There was the last time we talked about it. I'd like to know who else is doing the drop program besides, you know, I mean, what other communities have that for their sworn officers. Last time we did this, there was some concern among the sworn personnel that, that, that some of our numbers weren't accurate. They had a different, somebody else to run the numbers themselves and they, they, the numbers that the police had and we had didn't jive. So I try to make sure that you at least, or everybody's dealing with the same set of numbers. And we didn't do it because we thought it was too expensive and the police didn't think it was, so. Also, I mean, I'd like to know a little bit more about our retirement funding. 80, when were we at 80.1%? Did we hit that June 30th or something? Was that the?
Yes, I said June 30th, 2012.
June 30th, just a few days ago, because we haven't been at that. I'd also like to know who else is at, that's pretty good, from what I understand. I know there was a time we were actually better, but for, but for plans right now, I'd like to know, you know, that's, I know in Portsmouth, for instance, they have been struggling.
Right.
But anyway, I'd like to know what that is. Detroit is having a terrible time right now, as you know. It just filed bankruptcy largely because the retirement system is somewhere in the 30% range of what it's funded. I don't know, but it's, but, I mean, that's the message I would want to make sure our employees understood, that we were 80, over 80%, you know, funded, which is where I think most of people, the experts would tell us they want us to be at least, right? I mean, I think they would applaud that number, so. And then the step system, the piece about comprehension, you explained that very nicely, by the way, for the first time. So I think we ought to talk a little bit about, I mean, how do we alleviate some of this compression that's occurring without the steps? So, right, Tommy?
Just two things. Just concerned, continue to be concerned about our retirees. And when we offer a salary increase to our employees, that we don't do anything for our retirees and they just continue to get further behind. Just a simple statement, I know it's, we don't have enough time to talk about it, but that's something that needs to be discussed. And we hear their stories every time during the budget cycle when they come and tell us what's happening. It's very sad stories with our retirees, particularly with the health insurance part of it and how expensive it is for them. The second thing is, when we talk about employee, employer of choice and those types of initiatives, have we looked into offering incentives for employees to live in the city of Norfolk? If they come, move into the city of Norfolk, live here, whether there's some kind of tax program or we have some kind of housing program, or you get some kind of discount on your health insurance, because we want to create a healthy city in the initiatives we're doing here. But I'm just wondering if we've looked into any programs like that or do we know of any cities that are offering that type of incentive for employees to actually live in the city? I know it's required for your upper level, but for just regular employees, what can we do to get them to live here in our city?
That's a good idea, we'll look into that also.
Band the box. This one's going to be even shorter. Purpose of this is just to explain the initiative, tell you a little bit about what other states and localities are doing. And it does, it's intended to strengthen the goals of economic vitality and our employer of choice initiatives. No action is required from you at this time. So what is the box? People ask, what do you mean by band the box? It is a checkbox on our employment application. And basically, we have two of them. One that says, do you have a pending felony or misdemeanor? The other one that says that, do you have, have you been convicted of a felony or misdemeanor? And a candidate needs to check both of them or answer yes or no to them and then explain a little bit further. But we also have this in bold statement that says, note, any affirmative response will in and of itself not disqualify you from employment with the city. We do not use this, these two boxes as a qualifier alone to not give somebody a job.
So why do you do it?
I mean, come on. Okay. I mean, when's the last time somebody actually got past the box?
Yeah. Why do you do it then?
They do it.
She's going to get you to where you want to be. Okay.
They happen in the past.
All right. Why don't we just go to conclusion? Would you like that? It's going to a conclusion.
You're right to there.
All right, so the, just threw me off. The proponents of this initiative says that if you remove the box, it removes any perception that a criminal history automatically disqualifies an applicant or the formerly incarcerated or what we call returning citizens. It does not require employers to hire people with criminal records, merely that it removes a perception and it promotes hiring based on qualifications. Nationwide participation, there are a couple of states that have banned it on a statewide level. There are several states that have localities that have banned it and a few that have done both. Around the nation, we have 50 localities that have banned this box. There are two of them in Virginia, Richmond and Newport News. City of Newport News did it in October 2012 and the city of Richmond did it in March 2013. Our current practice is to have those boxes and to collect criminal history. But we, when, when a candidate does select those boxes and they indicate a criminal history, we do look at the gravity of the offense, the length of time since the conviction and whether or not the offense is job-related. And a lot of times, for positions that are sensitive in nature, like public safety, care of children and care of elderly and disabled patients, it is used as a qualifier for the job. Conclusion. See, this is very short. Conclusion is, we're going to remove the box for positions that are, except for positions that are deemed sensitive, which are mostly your public safety and positions that work directly with children. And we will continue the practice of looking at those, any criminal history, based on the evaluation of the gravity of the offense, length of time since conviction and whether or not it's applicable to the job. We will develop policies to guide Human Resources on which jobs would get those, the boxes. And again, those are only the jobs that are required by state code that would need criminal history checks. I get you there?
Yes.
Okay.
So we just intend to move forward.
You don't, you don't need an ordinance, do you?
We want to know.
The policy, you mean?
Yes, sir.
Right. Okay. We want you to.
I'm sort of, I think that means we can hire Anthony Dupree as an accountant. When you, when that policy happens, will you let us know when it's official?
Mayor, Mayor of the Council, you have before you the final report from the Better Block that was held in the Arts and Design District. Assistant for your information this evening, basically what this report does is recap how the demonstration project was put together and then provides us with an implementation strategy for some short-term wins, so to speak, in the area of...
Hold on just a second. Marcus.
Yes, sir.
Not just let us know, it seems to me there ought to be some public announcement. So people applying for jobs who are at, you know, criminal backgrounds, we know that they're not going to get, I mean, that we changed, somebody needs to know we've changed our policy. Okay? So, I mean, the general public ought to know. So some of these folks who have these criminal backgrounds have understood in the past that, you know, we have this, we have the box and so they don't even apply. Okay? So, I mean, there ought to be some way to announce that to the public, that we, that our policy is such that, you know, what we are, you know, we have...
Open for business.
Does that impact the constitutional offices too, or do they have a separate process for applying? Do they follow under our practices?
Well, anybody who has used our common application would not have the box on unless it's a state, it could be public safety or citizen position.
They're suffering. This is a state application. Is the officer's application, are they at will? Okay. It's up to them.
So the implementation recommendations are built around programming and business development in the area. We're analyzing what the recommendations are, some of which we've already done. But it also speaks to, what Team Better Block considered this one one of the top five that they'd ever done across the nation. There were two, two reasons. Number one is the great support of the community. And the second is, which has actually changed our perspective about how to use this, this demonstration project, and that is that we had essentially a strategy and wraparound services that were being contemplated for the area. So rather than it just be an event and hope that it might spark something, the fact that the council had plans for creating the Arts and Design District, changing the zoning uses, the fact that we're looking at economic development incentives, if any, that we're looking at infrastructure improvements, helped actually create the momentum and the assurance for, particularly for people interested in reusing those properties that are there. We've seen three examples of that, that there is something that's going to happen. It wouldn't just have to happen on its own. So that's the strategy that we're going to use when we do this elsewhere in the city. We're going to look at what other items do we need to make sure that it's a success and not just a one-time event. The outcomes that we saw that spoke about, there was a contract that was put on the Texaco building the very next week, $1.1 million contract that the beauty parlor that's there is considering expanding into a vacant space. And that the furniture store that vacated the month prior to the event actually has now had a different use to come in with Alcymine Norfolk there. So we have new activity. And one of the key pieces now, so we'll start to look at programming and some of the infrastructure improvements.
I think you're aware that there is a little bit of controversy about some of the rules as far as ours and, yeah. So I hope we're working that out. Frank, am I correct on that?
We're making sure that people comply with...
There's a lot of angst on both sides of this. Both the people that were opening up businesses and felt we were being a little strict, people that were existing. So is there a dialogue going on about that, Frank?
Yes, ma'am, there is. We have had meetings with the folks from all committee Norfolk to make sure they do understand all limitations that they have to work within. They didn't understand all of those at the time they've been trying to move forward. Also, we're continuing to meet with them and have discussions. Mr. Mayor, what we want to do this evening is give you a briefing on the revisions to the floodplain regulations that have been presented to the planning commission, walk you through what the planning commission has recommended, as well as lay out some of the alternatives, some of the proposals for modification that have been made by different groups in the city, to see if we could get some council direction on this. Okay, let's get turned off. So why do we need to do this? You may remember that Mr. Kifer presented, when he did his first presentations to you, that's what we need to do in order to better protect Norfolk from flood damage. One of the issues he made was, we need to change our regulations because we are seeing more frequent flooding in the city. The other thing that we have to bear in mind is because of changes in federal law, flood insurance rates are going to be rising over the coming years. Federal government, in an effort to reduce the amount of subsidy that is being provided to homeowners who are experiencing flooding, has directed that flood insurance rates move toward becoming actuarial, which means based on the actual cost of the flood event to the government, as opposed to being heavily subsidized, which has been the case in the past. And the reason for this is, we are seeing the increased flooding all over the city. The other issue that we have to bear in mind is, we are seeing repetitive losses in our flooding. And this includes areas that have never experienced flooding before. Back in 2005, when we first began tracking repetitive losses, we had just over 200. 2012, close to 900 properties in the city of Norfolk have experienced repetitive loss. And if you look at the areas shown in red on this map, these are the areas where we have experienced repetitive loss and they're all over the city. And one of the other things that is becoming more of a challenge to us is, we are now seeing repetitive loss claims in areas of the city that have not previously experienced flooding, what we typically consider more inland areas of the city. So why is this happening? Well, in part, it is because of the issues of sea level rise. These four lines on this graphic show different projections of sea level rise. The black at the bottom is the historic trend for what they have been seeing. And if you followed that trend, it would suggest over the next 30 years, we're going to get a little over, a little less than a foot of sea level rise. But scientists at VENS, as they begin looking at this, they are saying sea level is rising much faster than this historic trend would suggest. So they've done projections of the low, medium and the high rates of sea level rise. And what they're saying, what they're telling us is that we can actually expect to see it somewhere around this medium range, which would mean close to two feet of sea level rise over the next 30 years. So with that background as to why, we need to begin looking at...
You said two feet over 30 years.
Yes, close to. So if we look at a map of Norfolk with what flood rates are, what the flood zone... So, if we look at a map of Norfolk with what flood rates are, what the flood zones are, what you're going to see is, everything that is in a color on this map is a flood zone. The entire city is within an identified flood zone. But each of these colors means something different. The V zones, where you're going to get wave velocity action, are all up in Ocean View. And that's where you're going to get your most significant damage during a storm with waves pounding the coast. We've seen that in all of our recent storms. The red zones are the areas where we know there is going to be significant flood damage. These have a 1% chance of flooding with up to a foot of water in any given year. The yellow zones, which I don't know how well they show up to you, but these are places that are right at the fringe of the red zones, the E zones. These are the places that have a 1/5th of 1% chance of experiencing flood damage in any given year. And the green is everything else in the city that generally would not be expected to get that severe flood damage, but you need to bear in mind that what FEMA defines as severe flood damage is one foot of water. And water doesn't end in an abrupt movement. So, you can, this is why we are seeing flood damage, repetitive losses occurring throughout the city, including in areas that you typically wouldn't think are being in a flood zone. And one other thing that people need to remember is that if you're a homeowner with a mortgage, you have a 1 in 4 chance of being flooded, having your home flooded during the life of that mortgage. Well, because of the issues with flooding...
Your time is up, Bartley. You're the first one. Sorry. We moved to the second floor, isn't it?
Because the issue we've experienced with flooding, one of the things that we participate in is the Community Rating Service. And this is a system where the federal government gives us credit for proactive things the city is doing to address flooding issues. And the higher your score is in the CRS, the greater the reduction in insurance premiums that citizen property owners get. And so, what we can do is, we can do things like improve our regulations, which is what we're talking to you about now. We can do increased outreach, something that we've been doing for a number of years. We send out every year hundreds of letters advising people of flood issues and encouraging them to get flood insurance, and our improved floodplain mapping. And I need to say a thank you to Mr. Sullivan and the staff at IT, because they have done a great job in updating our floodplain mapping and helping us get credits in this area.
So, we're, it's a rating of 1 through 10, and 10 is the lowest, and we're at 9?
Correct. We're trying to move this up to a 7 or an 8.
Okay. And what's the gap between just a 9 and an 8? What would make a difference between 9 and 8?
It's a whole series of things that you can do. And so, what we are doing is trying to, you know, things like improved record-keeping, which we're currently working on doing with building safety, they are enhanced floodplain regulations, things like increasing your design floor elevation, which is something that's being proposed, looking at issues of repetitive loss. There's a whole array of regulatory things you can do, as well as administrative things, and we're looking at all of them, to try to move us up as far as we can, without being so onerous in the regulations that we're creating issues and problems for homeowners.
Are there any communities that are above a 5, 1 through 5?
I'm not aware of any in Virginia. And there may be in some areas, I just don't know. So, what's the first thing that we're proposing to do?
There's still a gap in southwest.
Increase our freeboard. Now, freeboard is the difference between the base flood elevation, which is the level that FEMA, when they map the city, indicates is going to have flood inundation. And where you are going to say the finished floor needs to be. So, that is what we're looking at with freeboard. And what we're trying to do is to get the lowest floor that is finished in a house to be well above that flooding, so that any of the ductwork that is under that house is out of the range of flood damage. Frank? Yes, sir.
This is, I mean, I appreciate the presentation. At some point, are you going to tell us what the staff recommends?
Yes, sir.
As a, okay, right, as opposed to what the...
To what planning commission, sir.
Yeah, because I understand there was a discrepancy.
There is a discrepancy, yes, sir. We're going to do that at the end, and in your direction is how you'd like this to proceed.
And where did 3 feet come from?
3 feet is, we had originally suggested 2 feet. 3 feet was recommended by the planning commission in order to better protect the ductwork because of the increased flooding we are seeing. It is likely to better protect houses over a longer period of time than 2 feet would. So, we would concur with the 3 foot of freeboard at this point, in order to better protect ductwork, which is an issue that council members have discussed with past flood events.
Does it, do you have any sense of what the difference in cost is for an average homeowner to...
Yes, I'm glad you asked that question. If the house is built below the base flood elevation, your flood insurance is going to cost almost $10,000 a year. If you have it at the base flood elevation, it's roughly $1,400 per year. But if we go to 3 feet, we can cut that down to $400 a year as an actuarial level. A significant cost savings to go to 3 feet.
But we were asking how much it costs to add that.
It is probably going to get you a savings in the order of, well, between $1,400 and $400, probably around $500 a year.
But if, but if a house had to go back and do it because they had repetitive flood under these new requirements, they would have to raise their house...
If you have repetitive loss, FEMA is going to require you to raise your house records.
And to your question, and that was the...
I'm trying to, originally, I understand the planners, your staff started off with 2 feet.
Correct.
Okay. I understand the planning commission said...
Wanted to go to 3, yes.
Right. And they, as a policy, in a vacuum, that may make, you know, why not 4 feet, right? I mean, if you, if that's all, if...
I think 4 feet would be excessive.
I'm just kidding. Okay. But I, but I guess what we're going, what we're hearing about is, why 3 when the professionals said 2, and there is, there is a cost associated with 2 foot, not to mention 3 foot or 4 foot. So, Ron, were you going to add to that, Don?
Well, I was just going to add that FEMA had done a study about what's the actual additional cost of construction, and less than 1 and 1/2 percent typically is what that is to give that, that range of freeboard.
That's on a new bill.
That's on a regular construction.
But is there a science to the 2 to 3? I mean, why not 4? That's why I was asking. Where they came up with 3, other than, golly gee, this sounds good.
What we're looking at is trying to get a range where we will have the home, the finished floor elevation of the home, above that flood level as flooding increases over the next 30 years. So, that's why they were recommending going higher, because with 2 feet, if you do see the levels of flood increase that VENS is projecting, you are going to have damage to ductwork before the life of your mortgage is over.
Does 2 feet give us a rating of 8 or 7?
No, sir. By itself, it does not.
So, it has to be 3 in order to get an 8 or 7?
No, it's a whole array of things that have to be dealt with.
I know, I'm saying it's part of that equation.
Part of it is how much above that you get. I think going above 3 would be excessive.
I don't want to go above 3.
I think, I think 3...
I want to know, 2's okay.
2 would get us some credits, but not as much. But the issue that you've got to come back to is that with 2-foot increase, 30-year mortgage, your homes are going, homes that are mortgaged right now, being built right now, with a brand-new mortgage, are likely to experience flooding in the house within the next 30 years. So, that is why you're looking at going to that higher level. But we do recognize if we go here, we are going to have to make some other changes in these ordinance. And that's because right now, we measure the height of a structure at ground level. But what we are proposing if we, is if we do change how we are measuring, or how we're requiring the design flood elevation for a house to be raised, we need to change how we measure the height of a house. So, what we are proposing to do is to allow the height of a house to be measured at the base flood elevation, whatever it is. And this gives you an idea of what that would do. This is an actual house that has been proposed for being elevated. Right now, it is built slab-on-grade construction. And so, this house is low, is well below the 35-feet maximum height that you can have in most residential districts in the city.
You mean the slab-on-grade?
This is slab-on-grade.
That's a step, what steps go on there?
That is what is done with the house raised. What you're looking at is right here, none of that exists right now.
Oh, oh, oh.
This is, what we're showing is the effect of changing how you would measure the height. If you measured based on the design flood elevation and where this house actually is, because the grade is at nothing, and the flood elevation is a little over 4 feet here. So, this house has suffered flooding, every flood we have had in recent, this is actually on Yarmouth Street. So, what's proposed is to measure the height of the house at the finished floor eleva, or at the base flood elevation, so that starts you here. So, whereas right now, this is 35 feet, if you make the change in how you measure the height, this becomes 35 feet. So, you hold homeowners harmless for the impact of raising that finished floor. So, I think if we are going to raise the finished floor, we absolutely have to do this.
So, that speaks to some of the concern that...
That will speak to some of the concern, but the thing you've got to bear in mind is, the building code right now requires that your ductwork be out of the floodwaters. So, your ductwork, if it's under the house, is already forcing it to be greater than 2 And then that gets us to the next issue that we deal with, and that is, 1/4 of all flood insurance claims right now are coming from X zones, the green areas of the city, areas that we typically don't think of as flooding. So, what we are proposing here is to require that all development within an X zone, the green areas, have a finished floor or be flood-proofed to at least 18 inches above grade. What that does is eliminate the ability to slab-on-grade construction. It would require raised slab or across base underhalls.
Why would you do that across the city period?
Because once we get, if you do this, and you have the issues with regard to raising the design floor elevation in flood zones, you're already prohibiting slab-on-grade construction.
I saw a map one time where they showed a category 1, 2, 3...
We have...
...flood from Norfolk State on inlet. My question is, I see you've got areas that are more red than other areas. But again, I asked Pigeon Beach Boulevard, just looking at that category, I think it was a 3, where it would pretty much take out Norfolk State. Why would you permit, again, slab-on-grade construction to continue to take place when you know what this...
What this does is prohibit slab-on-grade construction.
This does, but I'm saying, within our...
Right now, because I can do this through the flood ordinance, I cannot do it through the building code because state law doesn't let me.
Okay, okay.
But I can do it through the flood protection measure, which is why we're trying to go there. And what this will do is protect those homes that you're talking about from future flooding. It will provide more protection for them. One of the other things we're looking at, and this I will acknowledge, is one of the more controversial issues, and that is to establish a repetitive loss provision in the flood ordinance. The reason for doing repetitive loss is that if you have the repetitive loss provisions in your ordinance, a homeowner whose home is flooded can qualify for additional funding of up to $30,000 from FEMA to raise their home. If you don't have this provision in the ordinance, you can't qualify. We've had a number of homeowners in Norfolk who have come to us asking us to sign a letter about repetitive loss. We can't sign it because we don't have the provision in the ordinance. And what a repetitive loss provision would mean is that you have 2 flood events, 25% of the market value of the home, you now have to raise the home. And that's all we're doing at this point, is providing access to funding by doing this.
Suppose you have a townhouse, and they're attached, then what do you do?
Well, if you can't, FEMA can't condemn the house, or your mortgage company can require you, because you won't be able to get flood insurance. That's why with townhomes, you really are trying to make sure everything is lifted from the beginning.
I'm speaking of Spartan Village.
Spartan Village, there's no way we can salvage Spartan Village. The only thing we can do with Spartan Village, because of the way it's designed, is buy There's no way to raise those individual structures because of the way they're constructed, which is why the Figaro study recommended in this area, we really need to look at buying it out.
I know, some of those people can't even get flood insurance.
They can't. And that's because, so you couldn't get a mortgage in Spartan Village right now, because the federal government says they have had repetitive loss, we're not going to continue to insure it, which means they can't get a mortgage. And what FEMA wants to do is have the properties demoed, and then have the city take them over and keep it as permanent green space. We've had that proposal, but not in Spartan Village at this point for FEMA. As part of this issue with repetitive loss, we're also looking at a repetitive, or cumulative improvement provision, which would mean that if you're making improvements to your home over a 10-year period, if the value of the improvement exceeded 50% of the market value of the house, you would have to meet, raise the house to meet flood ordinance requirements. Now, the current ordinance only requires that if you have one event or one set of improvements that exceed 50% of the value. So, what is being proposed is if you have 2 or more that would exceed that over a 10-year period, you would have to come into full compliance.
And that full compliance would then mean that everybody who falls in that would have to raise their house to at least 3 feet?
Yes.
Because that's what the planning commission is asking?
That would be if you followed the planning commission's recommendation, yes, sir.
So, if we had, unfortunately, an event, 2 events in 10 years, all of those areas in red most likely will be impacted, and we would expect every homeowner in that area that's below the 3 feet, that has the 50%, to have to raise their house 3 feet?
Only if there, you had the cumulative repetitive losses in that property, because these are areas where you have repetitive loss.
Right.
But it doesn't mean that every home in it has experienced repetitive loss.
But quite a few in that...
They have.
...red area would.
But we have, one example we've got that I'll share with you, is we had a man who got 43, has an $80,000 home, got a $43,000 insurance payoff, had a second damage, also graded storage event, an insurance claim with more than 50% of the value of the home. And FEMA told him he now has to raise the house. It's going to cost him $38,000, and they said, "We've given you $43,000." And he said, "Just, but I spent that, and I didn't make any improvements to the house." That's the challenge that we deal with.
Do you foresee that something like this could prohibit future development of houses? That it could scare away development in areas like East Ocean View and Willoughby that have open land, and that developers now look at the additional cost that would, to do this, as well as if houses need to be rehabbed because of events?
The new, the new cost, the cost of actually raising a house, with new construction, is minimal, so 1 and 1/2 percent.
Right.
Your challenge is not in, when you're doing new construction, your challenge becomes when you were looking at older homes, particularly older homes that were built slab-on-grade construction, there's no easy way to raise those. So, we took all of this out for public meetings, and we had 8 different public meetings. We met with 2 civic leagues. I will acknowledge that Willoughby asked for a meeting after the planning commission public hearing, but everything else was during the period we were getting in.
Who took it out?
Staff, planning staff.
And based on that is how you came up with your recommendation of 2 foot?
No, sir. We started off with 2 feet. After we went out to the public...
Right.
I'm fine with 3 feet. I would, I would now recommend 3 feet. Because from the public, that's not the issue. At the public hearing, you had 2 citizens who spoke in open support. We've had one letter from a citizen concerned about the 3 feet. None of the public, when we had those meetings, raised that concern. We did have requests for change from Tidewater Builders and Hampton Rock Realtors, as well as from Willoughby Civic League. So, what I will tell you is, TBA and Hurrah had 2 issues. One, having deferred effective date... One, having deferred effective date to January 1, 2014, I would recommend that to you. I think that's important so that you don't, number one, we need time to develop the record-keeping processes that we have in place. The other issue that TBA and Hurrah asked for is don't use a 10-year period for your, your repetitive loss or your cumulative improvements, use a five-year period. I recommended this to the planning commission. Planning commission said no, but I would recommend both of these to you. In Willoughby, their issue was if you are looking at the repetitive damage issue, only count damages that occur as a result of flooding, not things that occur from any other event. We hadn't heard this before the planning commission. We'd recommend incorporating this. I would recommend incorporating this provision as well.
All right. Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Are you talking about living space and you're considering garages?
A garage is not, is not a finished floor.
So, okay, so that's, okay.
The issue is people need to be advised that they should not enclose an open area. We've had a lot of homes up in Ocean View that without permits enclose their, their raised areas under the home, and then those areas flood because that's, they're built with the intention they will flood.
Mr. Manager, you've got five minutes.
I'm wrapping up. So we would recommend what Willoughby has asked for as well. It has been reviewed, the ordinance has been, proposed ordinance has been reviewed by the state, and the state's comments were, this is fine, that they don't see any problems. They said this is consistent with what Norfolk has been doing in trying to be a leader in the area of flood protection. So planning commission recommendation does get you the most points. That goes the furthest of what we're doing. But again, what I would point out is the TBA-Hurrah recommendation does result in a minor number of additional points you get, but we don't think it is significant. And it does still allow the opportunity to address issues of homes that are properties that do receive multiple flood damage. With the Willoughby recommendation, we would also, I would recommend you incorporate this as well. That has absolutely no impact on our CRS score. And then option four is obviously leave everything alone, which we would not recommend to you. So CPC's recommendation maximizes your CRS points, which will get you the lowest rates for citizens. The TBA-Willoughby recommendations have minimal impact, and so we would recommend making the modification as requested by Willoughby as well as by TBA and Hurrah. We think those make sense.
Are there any issues with this in the historical districts in raising those houses?
We met with the Gunt Neighborhood League and they were good with it. Gunt has come out, the House upon Yarmouth, they're, they're looking forward to-
Right, but if you had, I'm talking about the substantial damage over two, two in 10 years. If you have an area, say the Hague area, that has, that I just see a significant cost in trying to raise those properties there.
Sure. Okay. We really need to talk about that, but not tonight. Going forward, what is your, I mean, what, I mean, now that you've said this, it's going to take effect until January the 14th.
What we would like to-
January 2014, we have a little bit of time at least to talk about that.
What we would like to do is, was get direction, Mr. Malita is here, he's working on refining the ordinance. We'd like to get direction from you if you would concur in our recommendations to incorporate what TBA, Hurrah, and Willoughby have asked for.
That sounds like it solves some of the issues.
And if there are other changes, if you could give us that direction as well.
Well, I'm not sure I know yet. I mean, there might, may be some other things in. But I think you need to draft the ordinance the way that you have proposed, just the way it is.
Thanks.
And then, you know, schedule a public hearing.
And we would-
We're all going to be talking to our constituents between now and then. And I don't mean like, I mean, give us a couple of weeks, Marcus, after we get back. And then we would have a public hearing, and then I'd close the public hearing and not vote on it that evening.
Correct.
So we could all come back and discuss it a little further. And then if we have to modify, come out and have another public hearing or something. I mean, that's, I mean, I, we have some time and, I mean, it won't take effect until January the 1st of 2014.
Yes.
So people have some-
That's really what we wanted to get tonight is some direction.
Does that sound okay? We have, we scheduled a public hearing ourselves, and then we agree not to vote on it that day until we can come back, maybe ask more questions about things that we heard, and then-
And I will let you know that we have, we are trying to schedule a meeting right now with the Berkeley Beacon Life neighborhood, which has asked for some information. But we are trying to continue to-
I'd get your ordinance up on the web as soon as possible for people to come in.
It is out there.
The one that you're suggesting?
No, sir. The one that's recommended by the planning commission. And as soon as we get, after tonight, when we work with Mr. Malita and the attorney's office and get them, then we would be putting that out there as well.
Is that okay? Terry, you have a thought?
Yes.
Okay. Right, Tommy. And if you've got some individual concerns, we all, I don't mean tonight, but I, because I know it's in your board, for instance, there is a lot of it. So we ought to talk about some of those things?
I'm just talking about the historical areas and what the cost would be to that.
Well, I think they're already aware.
Yeah.
I mean, the issue is less with the regulation and more what's happening to their houses. Every time it's a flood, there's no cost. So it's, you know, I think that's, this is just secondary.
And I understand that, but I think, because we assume that we're not going to have two events in 10 years, but what if that were to happen? How many of those homeowners would be able to afford to do that? We can, we can talk about it. If you go to weather.com, they're running a story on the front page about the top 10 cities in the United States that have, are at risk for major flood damage. And it says Virginia Beach is number two, but it's our area is on there.
We're only beaten out by New Orleans.
Yes, Charleston's down there too.
Yeah, they're in the top 10.
We're number two and don't want to go to number one.
Charleston is not on the chest of the day, the crust of the day. And that's probably one of our issues is being compounded by the fact that we are sinking.
Exactly. Mr. Mayor, you had asked for an update on where U.S. Development is with 161. So working with the development department, we've prepared this information for you. U.S. Development has contracted with McPherson Design Group for the structural engineering, particularly looking at what needs to be done on the ground floor, which is the area in the building that right now is not safe. This is the same firm used by the city to do the evaluations. U.S. Development went with them with the idea they could be able to do it most quickly in addressing the issues that the city or that McPherson has identified. They have hired McCory Construction out of South Carolina. It's a firm that they use regularly, U.S. Development uses it regularly, to do the work on the parapet wall. McCory is working with McPherson to determine exactly what needs to be done and the best way to do it. So we're expecting that to begin very quickly. And working with McPherson, they are developing the remediation plan that we have identified to U.S. Development we need before September. They do have their permanent financing for 161. They do have the, the letter from VHDA that they have the financing to do the work on 161 Grammy. And Commonwealth Preservation Group, that's Paige Pollard's firm, is working on historic tax credits for them. And they're working with architects on the design work on 161, so they are making progress.
What's going to be their timeframe? Do they have a-
I do not know their timeframe.
Do they have a time limit?
In part, that is going to depend on the extent of the structural work that needs to be done.
Did the first group know what was supposed to be done? And I mean, when it was the first owner, did he have, he didn't know?
He didn't. 161 LLC never developed a remediation plan, so all they had was the information that we provided from McPherson indicating the problem. McPherson is now working for U.S. Development to look at how to best resolve those issues.
When McPherson bought the property, did they know about the ongoing saga between the city and-
U.S. Development is very, when they bought, when U.S. Development bought the property, they, they were very much aware, we had given them copies of all of the structural reports we had before they closed on the property.
So in that case, I think that we should be a little bit more aggressive in terms of getting them to do something. If they bought it knowing what was what, then I think we should be a lot more aggressive in getting it done. If they had bought the property and not knowing it, just said, wow, what did we buy? But since they knew, since they knew what they were buying, I think we'd be, need to be a lot more aggressive, you know, with them. That's, that's my opinion. And I don't know whether the city attorney, Marcus, needs to get involved with it or not, but somehow we need to get this thing done. You know, extensions, extensions, extensions. You know, I don't think that's, that's, that's good. I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but it's been going on. We just need to, we need to do something.
I'd like to see us follow this here closely.
We are continuing to monitor it very closely. Our equality staff are involved in all of the meetings with development going over the issues, and we have been very clear that we have to see that remediation plan. They cannot do the work on the structural issues until the remediation plan has been approved. That's just an issue that we don't want them doing things that aren't going to solve the problem. And then we are, have advised that we are expecting continuous, ongoing progress that we are going to be pushing as aggressively as possible.
And the fines, and we have the fines that were, we'd be starting out, we don't profit that much.
I'd have to defer to Mr. Pishko on that.
To make the closing happen with the financing, the buyer has a note to the city so that they're obligated to pay it, but it's not a lien on the property in order to help with the financing. So the obligation continues.
How long do they have to wait?
I can't remember off the top of my head. I'll get you the date.
The previous owner is now out of the program, out of, off the hook.
We could go back there if, if the current owner doesn't succeed, but-
They're there if there's a problem.
Right.
Okay, we're going to go into closed session. Close meeting.
With members of the council, some of the closing on July 23rd, 2013 at 5:35. We take our climate control to see how the building is sitting off purpose and how it responds at 3:00.